Okay, welcome, everybody. This is the June monthly meeting of Stevens Memorial Library Board of Trustees, pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, GLC 30A 18, and the governor's March 15, 2020 order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the North Andover Board of Library Trustees will be conducted via remote participation for members of the public. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with a right and/or requirements to attend this meeting can be found on the town's website at www.northandoverma.gov. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to watch the meeting may do so on their televisions by tuning to Comcast or Verizon Channel or online at www.northandovercam.org. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so, despite best efforts, we will post on the Town of North Andover website an audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. Okay, so we will call to order at 5:02 with the roll call. Myself is Anne Kavanagh, Mary Deshaun, Bill Duffy, Eva Hamery, Mark Rogers, Earl Svensson, Kathleen Keenan, and Cindy Maza. And Stan Lempert is not here, and Dee Casey is not here. Okay, so I had some correspondence, which is mainly from the town clerk, saying that we can now have all meetings in person going forward. So this will be our last one remote, and we will discuss those dates later on in the meeting. Other than that, yes?
I just wanted to let you know there has been no public comment.
Oops, yes, no public, okay.
Okay, I just wasn't sure if you were gonna ask, and I just thought I'd let you know.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we'll go right into the reports from me, the chairperson report. We have some action items, but they will be under the old business and scattered throughout the meeting. And the only other thing is Mary got the contract from Hemingway &amp; Barnes, and Mary, you can talk about that.
So basically, Anne signed on behalf of the board. They're gonna commence work. They have been furnished with materials related to the gift of the library to the North Andover community and the setup of the trustee. What we're looking for, if they're available, would be perhaps minutes, and obviously they'd be extremely old, but as to how the investment committee, or rather, the investment fund was set up. So if anybody has any leads on that, that would be great.
Okay. Would that have been like, how long ago, like way back?
I don't know when it was set up.
Bill, do you have any?
Yeah, I didn't quite understand. What are they looking for?
They're just looking for the creation of the investment account, that sort of origin document that might have either through minutes or some sort of a vote or something like that, as to when it was set up and mechanics for it, if it exists.
They do understand these are all endowment funds?
Yes.
And so they wanna know what the implementation is? Or are they looking for when we went into the total return way of dealing with it rather than tracking it if they did so individually? I don't know, I'll give it some thought, but I doubt.
Or is it more of like how the endowment was set up, like as far as it being under the board?
No, I mean, the gifts are always to the board. What the total return concept does is say that, you know, you track as is being done, what the, both the yield and the realized capital gains are, and then you distribute them based upon the percentage ownership of each of the various funds, whether it's a Stevens Fund or a Brass Street Fund or a, you know, the recent fund for the employees and so on. But, I mean, that was, that's really a mechanical operation. It's not the core. I mean, the core is what's in the gift instruments, you know?
So I'm thinking, and obviously, none of us were around, like when that first gift came in, is there something to reflect? You know, we need to set up, you know, some sort of like, we need to have an instrument where we hold these things, hold these monies for the benefit of the operation of the library. So would there be, would there be like, old, old minutes evidencing that? Or even later on, just saying, you know, we're going to take all of these gifts and put them into an investment account?
I have, I, in my, you know, what nearly 40 years in the board, I don't think there was ever any vote taken in that, in that amount. It was more just, you know, internally, you know, there's no...
There's nothing to memorialize that.
Exactly.
Earl, didn't you and Stan find those wonderful books with all those minutes written by Annie Sargent and all that?
Right.
We could go back and thumb through that. The other thing I know, I don't know if it's gonna help them. Kathleen, you had sent me some, I'm trying to remember, but it was at a time when we were trying to figure out when the money came in from each donor?
Yes.
You had sent me some documents. I don't know if that would help them. For the Duchesne money, you know, that was relatively recent. It's probably something...
Yeah, I mean, but the question is, what is the Hemingway &amp; Barnes lawyer looking for? I mean, what's the goal? I don't quite understand what the goal is.
I think they're trying to get a sense for the creation of the account and the supervision of the funds. I think a side item is why tax returns maybe weren't filed. Even though it's clearly charitable, would the IRS maybe look at the fact that no returns were ever filed? So they're trying to just get a feel for, like, when was this set up? When, as I said, just like an origin story to this, just so that they can, I think, have a narrative, so that they can present it to the IRS when they're looking for the designation, the 501(c)(3).
The reason no IRS papers are filed is because everything is held under the Town of North Andover's tax ID number as a municipality account. So in some ways, maybe the question is to go back and look at when these started appearing on the town balance sheet.
Yeah, they had to make the inquiry of the town, because one thing that might help is that every, at the end of each year, that there was a report filed with the Finance Office of the town, summarizing what, you know, what the endowment holdings were. That's the only record I can think of that was a constant one.
Okay, so... All right, well, we'll have to just look through those old documents.
Anne, I'm sorry, Mary, you and I could talk, and I can think about, you know, how to help you maybe find something like that.
Right. Well, and Earl, how much of the minutes did you and Stan, did you scan? You gave me a CD with all the old minutes on it.
As far as I know, I scanned them all up through 1990, and then there really is no... Scanned everything in the files. After some point, there was nothing in the files.
What about simply looking in the town reports year by year? I mean, that's sort of the official documentation of what's taking place in town, and it covers, to the best of my memory, how we handle, you know, how the endowment funds were being handled by reporting on what the assets were and so on.
Okay, I can certainly look into that and get historical.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, more recently, if they want the spreadsheet that has all the breakdown, you know, but that's not really gonna establish the reason there is an endowment fund, right? That's just gonna account for what's in there.
Okay, well, we'll talk about that separately.
Mary, if they're having trouble, I'd be glad if he wants to call me, he or she, I'd be glad to talk with him, or talk with him on a conference call with you, because, you know, this is not the normal arrangement with us privately empowered and nevertheless being under the umbrella of the town, you know?
I think they have an appreciation for that. I will take you up on your offer, though, Bill, if it gets a little, I mean, over my head, just, I don't have the level of institutional knowledge you do, so I will definitely reach out to you.
Yeah, okay. Good, yeah, bye-bye.
All right, Kathleen, sorry, I think I might have taken that out of order, but in any case, we will move on to the library director report. But thank you, Mary, for that.
So in some ways, just a lot of summaries of things that have been going on. Tomorrow is June 30, which is the fiscal year end, so we've been busy the last three weeks trying to get everything cleaned up financially, so that we're in good shape in terms of submitting all of our payrolls and all of our invoices and things, so that we end the year on a positive note, both in terms of process, but also in terms of having expended our money as well as we possibly could in a really strange year. The town manager put a spending freeze on June 11, so that had us sort of circling, trying to find ways to fix some things that hadn't happened then. And of course, next Tuesday, we're closed on Monday, we're observing the Fourth of July on Monday, so next Tuesday, in theory, we open the books for FY '22. Typically, we don't really actually start doing anything in terms of the new year except for payroll. The procuring takes a little while longer to get set up and for us to decide what sorts of things we could do. The other thing that's been consuming a lot of time are staff changes. Sarah Allwarden, who was our electronic resources librarian, basically gave me her two-week notice and is already gone. She had some better opportunities, which certainly makes sense for a young professional, so we wished her well. Jill Barker, who had not been planning to retire immediately, had some family circumstances changed, and so she basically said, "I'm retiring now," and so in the last month, we've been working to sort out all of the information that relates to her successfully retiring. So her last day is July 23, but in fact, she has about six weeks of vacation, so she's already gone. One of the impacts of that is that between those two people, we're down 43 hours a week in terms of people taking care of the public since we just reopened. So Cindy has spent quite a bit of time trying to just make sure we have staff in place. We've had a very pleasant reopening experience. People have been very happy to be back. People have been complimentary about what we did all the time that we were closed, appreciative of the electronic resources, really appreciative of the curbside service, and of course, delighted to be back. And I think everybody coming into the building is feeling very comfortable and very safe there. We put back about three-quarters of the furniture. There are a couple of spaces, like in the reading room or by large, where we didn't put all of the furniture back to make it be a little bit more spacious, and I think it's been really comfortable for people to be doing that. Other things that have been happening, if you watch the town news, you'll know that we've had a lot of senior departments leaving recently. The head of the Council on Aging, Irene O'Brien, just retired, and we just started on June 14, a new director for the senior center. We've already met with her, and she's starting to learn about North Andover and thinking about how to partner within the library, with the library, so that's really good. Kathy Darby, who's the HR director, her last day is tomorrow. You've all received an invitation to stop in and wish her well. It's at the Stevens Estate from 1:00 to 11:30. And then our town clerk left, and we have a brand-new town clerk who Anne has just met, somebody may have met her at town meeting. She started on Monday, and town meeting was on Thursday, so it was really dropped right off the end of the dock for her. And the unexpected change was that Joanna Roulette, who was the director at the Stevens Estate, has also left. Her last day was last Friday. We have appointed somebody as new director up there, but it's a very changing environment because the town has assigned a lease management, a third-party company, to manage the estate and the events. One of the things we've confirmed with the town manager is that the library in particular, but town departments in general, will be able to continue to use space at the Stevens Estate, either for free or at some kind of reduced rate. This includes both boards of trustees for us and the Friends of the Library. So the definition of the library being able to do things has been very generously expanded by Melissa, that it includes the board and the Friends, as well as the library department itself. So that's gonna be something really new for us to kind of learn about. The other thing that's happening, coming up this year, in the union contracts for both the clerical and the professional libraries, we are going to start having performance reviews from members of those two unions. So one of the things that's happening, as we've had, could somebody mute? I think that's...
Can everyone mute themselves? Because there's a lot of background noise coming through.
Thank you. The part of the performance review process is that all of the job descriptions need to be reviewed and accepted by both town management and by the respective union. Because this is getting ready to happen momentarily, instead of just immediately filling the empty position for the electronic resources librarian, I have folded that back into the process. So I am able to go ahead and fill Jill Barker's position, which is a big help. She was on 25 hours a week. The second position, we're going to start looking at that job description before we advertise the position. So that's kind of staffing. It's kept us very busy in the past four weeks, figuring out sort of what's going to happen. The one thing I will say that's extremely positive is that the town this year went ahead and did a salary compensation study for the non-union members. So that included Cindy and myself, as well as about 42 other people. The study found that both the library director and the library assistant director were into a low category. We have both been upgraded to a different pay structure and both started to receive compensation, retroactive pay increases to cover that fact. So needless to say, Cindy and I both are very appreciative of this.
Oh, good, that's awesome.
Yeah, this is something that Kathy Darby had wanted to do for many years, and the town didn't seem to be in a position to do it. And both Melissa and Dee Casey felt it was important to get it done this year in spite of COVID and everything else. So when they finished the study, and the study was done by a third-party firm who specializes in this, so that it's, I'm gonna say, very mathematical or statistically related and not based on a subjective study done by members in the town departments or committees. So certainly, we are very appreciative of that. It was like a good note to end the year on after so many other things were pretty tough. The building projects, we'll talk about the bigger projects below. We have a couple of smaller kinds of repair things, that everything's on hold until after July 1 because of the spending freeze, and that's actually good news for us, because we could focus on other things instead. The Friends had a very successful sale at the Stevens Estate under the tent. They're talking about potentially doing their October sale there as well. They had a very positive response from people who liked how open the space was and how easy it was to get around. So that's gonna be an open conversation going for a while, whether we have the next sale in the library building or under the tent again. But they did very well in the sale, which means that they're giving us money for summer reading. And you'll have started to see some of the news that summer reading is underway. We've started promoting it a little bit and talking about registering the events to do things. The activities actually start next week after the Fourth of July holiday. I have been talking to the Friends about the space that they use in the building, and our conversation at the moment is about the lobby, which looks really lovely without everything in it and with the new paint job. And so I've explained to them that the trustees and I would like to not just put back everything the way it was, we would like to look at that space and consider how to do perhaps a smaller-scale book sale there and potentially use some maybe nicer-looking bookcases there. The one thing that we're still trying to figure out is how to do something about the donations, because whatever you do, people just dump things and make a mess with the donation. So that part, we won't be able to control as much. But the Friends are appreciative that we want to keep that space looking much nicer than we did kind of in the past. So I'll be working with them in the next few weeks to look at that. And later on, under new business, I'll have some expenses related to these things, but I'll let Earl get to his report.
Okay, Earl, you're up. Oh, there we go.
Thank you. Yeah, it took me a few seconds to unmute. So hopefully, everybody has a copy of the treasures report. It's pretty much the same format as we've been doing for the last year or so, I guess. It opens up with the account balance chart, which, again, post-COVID stock market. That chart goes from roughly about 825,000 to, as of last Friday, 957,000. And that also, you know, takes into account any withdrawals we've taken from the fidelity Some of you may have seen Stan's question about the gain, and, you know, the good news is, yeah, we have a gain. A significant portion of that gain, by the way, is the two Vanguard index funds that we hold. And I don't know if Mark's gonna talk about some of the rebalancing he's been doing, but, you know, I think we have to keep in mind that the stock market, it's unimaginable that it's gonna be able to do this for another year. However, I think a couple of things that I noted, given the gain we have, I think it somewhat validates what we've done as far as rebalancing the risk of the portfolio to be more on the stock side than the bond side. And, you know, you can see from the report that we left Eaton Vance at the end of, just about the end of 2020, and it somewhat validates our move away from Eaton Vance and keeping everything somewhat self-managed at Fidelity. So that's kind of a snapshot of the investments. There haven't been a lot of checks written since the last meeting. So at the moment, you know, we still have, where is it here? About $6,000 in our checking account. And I guess maybe Kathleen will tell us what we're gonna do with some of that. So unless anybody has any questions, I'll pass the baton back to you, Anne.
Okay, sorry, I had to unmute. All right, well, that's certainly good news as to the return. Okay, committee reports, investment committee. Mark, do you have anything?
Yeah, so I've got the target rebalancing, the sale will go off tomorrow, so I've got planned sales in to rebalance. And again, it would just was the, the goal is to balance to 80% stocks and 20% bonds and cash and over six quarters. So we're just on our way doing it one-sixth at a time.
Okay, that sounds good.
And now, hold on a second, let me just get the number up here. We currently stand at 67.32% stocks and 32.68% bonds.
Okay, so we're getting there?
Yeah, we're getting there.
All right, good. And then the other item that I have was that we will need to set up a meeting with the town manager and the accountant to talk about the endowment funds once the 501(c)(3) gets underway. But that's just, the goal is to do it within the next year, by the end of fiscal year 2022. So I'm next with long-range planning. We, I'd like to set up a meeting in July, actually, Mary, with just you and I, and Stan if possible, and maybe Kathleen and Cindy too, about our plan for the long-range plan, planning for the plan, which is gonna be due in October of 2022. So we have about a year lead there. So I will talk to you separately about a time for that.
Absolutely.
And then we can talk about how to proceed with it. And that's all I have for long-range planning. I'm still, I will kind of come up with a potential timeline, and I have some thoughts about it, but we'll talk about that at our later meeting. Okay, building committee, or do we wanna wait on that?
Well, I can tell you that Kathleen will give the updates on the building committee items that we talked in great length about last month. We've made slower progress, but we do anticipate that at our first in-person meeting, we'll be able to show you actual physical samples of the papers, right, Kathleen? We're hoping that we'll have those in hand next month, so we'll actually have a little bit of show and tell to make it worthwhile to be together again. Not that it won't be...
It'll be exciting.
Anyway, but now we'll have a little bit of something to look at. So, but the rest of the building stuff, I'll let Kathleen update you on. We've made a new bit of progress this month, right?
Great, well, things have been busy, I know. All right, so for old business, I think I jumped the gun on the 501(c)(3) with Mary, but we already talked about that, so we'll move on to the historic entrance project.
And that's the one that Eva was just referencing, that the next step was for us to see samples of the tiles, and we'll be arranging for them to... and we'll be arranging for them to bring us some physical examples to look at, particularly to see, I think, size and color and how we think they're going to fit in terms of appearance, working, you know, with the existing brick walkway that's there.
It'll be handy being there in person, so we could actually kind of...
Yep, yep. And I have not had any new updates from Waterfield Group itself. So I need to just check back with them and make sure that they've gotten answers to all of the questions they had when they met with Stan, with Steve Foster. And Eva and I, they had a number of questions, and I think we answered them all. But that's always one of those next steps to get back and make sure they're now got all the answers that they needed with their design work.
All right, that'll be, that'll be great.
And as far as the roof chimney, because it's not a pressing need, we wanted to have a little bit more information about comparing the cost of replacing the existing tiles or style of tiles or to go to the recommended copper roof. Steve Foster is trying to find a supplier for those, the clay tiles. He does have a company name in Ohio. He reached out to them, they have not answered him yet, that I've heard of. But Steve is also going into his extremely busy time of the year for all the school buildings. So I'll circle back with him and ask if he's, you know, heard anything back from that company. What we wanted to do was compare the cost between the clay tiles and the copper roof.
Okay, that sounds good. So the bathrooms.
We had some open questions, and I did not have a chance to talk to Tom Galvin about them. So that's an open item for me to get back to Tom with the questions that we had. Mostly, they related to the handicap bathroom, the location and the power switch, things like that.
Right, okay, well, that's, we'll hold off on that then.
Yep. And that's okay, because we're thinking that that information is needed in time for the capital improvement request, which is October 1st. So we've got a little bit of space there.
Okay, that's right. All right. Okay, now, the next thing is the remaining fiscal year '21 endowment spending. I was looking at the report, and it looks like we've spent most of everything but the furniture. Is that correct? Like, we, it looks like we've spent about $15,000 this year. And our total would have been about $35,000, but the $20,000 for the furniture were pushing off. Like, what does everyone think about that? I, I am thinking that we want to, I don't know how this works, like, if we would want to keep that money open to use from like 2021 and not take it out of our 2022 budget? Does that make sense?
So if I rephrase the question to make sure I'm understanding it, and you're suggesting that since we did not, we had planned to spend around $35,000 this year, but we have only spent 15,000, does that 20,000 that was not spent for FY '21, does it move forward into FY '22? So we would spend both the open balance or the remaining balance from '21 and the money that we would plan to spend for '22, which, if I'm doing my math right, is 20,000 plus 35,000. So we'd be looking at spending 55,000 in the coming year, assuming several things in terms of, you know, pricing of what we find and, of course, the health of the accounts, because we predict the 35,000 a year based on returns and things like that. Is that fair to say it that way, Mark?
Yeah, I mean, we, we allocated funds to buy something, and we didn't buy it. And so we didn't buy it for a lot of good reasons, right?
Yeah.
And so those reasons are now favorable. Then it seems that we are still in line to buy those things, regardless of the fiscal year they happen to fall into.
Okay, so that's not, that's just something we can do and not, we have to do anything official to like...
Totally, it's up to our, I mean, we've already, we've already taken a vote to spend those monies, and we've delayed it informally because of COVID, right? I don't think we took a vote to delay it, we just didn't, we just didn't execute it. So that vote still stands, that we have authorized those funds to be spent. So if we think the conditions are favorable, then we should be spending those funds. And I, and I think they're becoming more favorable, right?
Yeah.
Right, okay.
But we're not constrained, you know, we're only, we're not constrained by the kind of fiscal budgeting that municipalities go through.
They use it or lose it.
We can do what we like.
We can do what we want.
That's right. So we have a lot more degrees of freedom.
Okay, good, then. Let's see, speaking of that...
I will say, I will say that we've got 16,000 in cash, because I did, I did sell shares in anticipation of transferring funds into the checking account. So we can transfer those funds at any time. It's just sitting there, and it doesn't interrupt the balancing that I'm doing or anything like that, so.
So do, is there any update on the furniture? Or are we just, I know there's a lot of other things going on. So is that just kind of on pause right now, Eva?
Yes, there was a question of some model numbers that we were looking at, and that's where we stand right now. And once we've clarified that, the RFP will be going out.
Okay.
For the new furniture.
Okay, great. Just an aside, Kathleen, I think I muted Bill, so I don't know if he, if you can unmute him, like, Phil, I don't know if you want to say anything. Sorry, I can't unmute him.
I don't actually see anything here that says I have him muted either.
He has to unmute himself. We can't unmute him, so you want to...
You know how to do that on the phone? Sorry. Does anyone know how to do that?
Is it star 69 or something like that? It's star something. Eva, you might have been the one who did that before.
Is it star six?
Oh, star six, maybe.
Okay, so Bill, if you
You can get star six.
If you want to hit star six, you will unmute yourself. I'm sorry, I had muted you. Okay.
Am I okay?
Oh, yeah, we hear you, yay. Sorry.
No problem.
So it's star six, okay.
I've been muted before. Reunion meetings, they always mute me.
Okay, all right, so we are still going to table our endowment spending budget discussion for fiscal year '22 for now. And then, so we'll move on to the Town's 375th Anniversary Plans. Eva, do you have an update on that?
As far as I know, there's nothing new going on other than the Women's Club Gala on October 1st, which will be held at the Stevens Estate. There's the, what I'm hearing, besides my little dog talking to me next, next to me, what I'm hearing about the events for the 375th is some of them may even be pushed into next year just because they feel like they need more time to do some planning. I just mentioned the Stevens Estate, and I wanted to mention, Kathleen talked about Joanna Colantine, Joanna Willette Colantine Kerr is her last name now. She got married during COVID. Joanna has moved on to being the general manager at the Lanham Club, just so you know. So if you go over there, she's, she'll be there now, so.
I heard that. When is that Women's Club event supposed to be?
It's October 1st. Yes, it's October 1st.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, so sorry, I don't have more to tell you about that.
That's okay.
Okay.
All right, so the North Lawn Project. This is, we talked about this a little bit, and Kathleen sent the plan, I mean, the information about the different steps where we, it would make sense to plan, make a plan and a design for an outdoor room off of the front lawn and a landscaping design. And we thought maybe we could go to the CPA for money.
Yep, and this qualifies. It has several factors. Since it's open space, historical, it would qualify. We got the opinion of a former CPC member who said, yes, that sounds like something that would definitely qualify.
I would think so. Okay, great. So now the question is, do we want to vote to fund the Step 1, Task 1, which would be $10,000, to do the design? So that we are ready, when do we apply for the CPA? Is that February?
That's February, so that's the other thing, is that we, we're in very good timing here to be looking at this. And, you know, if we want to ask some more questions about the design or how we would like it to be done, things like that, we've got the time. The main thing is to not sort of let it slide and then run out of time. But the application is typically due the 1st of February. So the other possibility, of course, and this is something that was the approach that Andrew Mailer liked, was to, for something like this, to put it in in October as a capital improvement request, and then also to have it potentially put in as the CPA request. I'm not sure that I see the benefit for us to do that, to do it this way this time, if it seems that this is more likely to be funded by CPA, than, than not do twice as much work and apply two places and just, and just do the application for CPA.
Is that something that we should like ask about, like, ask the town manager? Or should we just, if we're pretty confident about CPA, try that first? And if not, then get it in next year for, but we want to try to do this with the front steps. That's the idea, right?
That would be the timing on that. So that might be something for Steve Foster to talk about to the town manager and explain our reasons for doing it in this time fashion. That, the other thing for me is if we would like to put in for the capital improvement money for the public bathrooms in October, I think we would look better to put in one application for the bathrooms to the capital improvement and not put in this as an application to capital improvement when we think it really will go through capital, through community preservation.
Do we have any idea of what it would cost? Like, did they give any kind of ballpark for like the actual work?
I don't think so.
No, and you know what the, unfortunately, these days, Anne, I would be afraid to hear what they would, what they would say, given the high cost of construction materials and things and labor right now. You know, I'm, I was having a conversation today about this, and we're hoping that this is a sort of a bubble and the prices a little bit, as
That's true.
It's a little better perhaps next year.
So, but then the other thing I was thinking about was, do we want to incorporate, like, have them do an entire lot, landscape design around the whole library, given that we've been planning on that? You know, would it make sense to do it all at once? And I know that we have the parking issue that we put in to see the capital improvement that we still have to wait on, but any thoughts?
Well, we did, we did walk around, you know, I think parking is such a big issue. I don't know that we should roll it into the front, the north lawn.
True, but I'm wondering if we should landscape around the whole building, like, all at once, or...
Well, I think what we would need to do is do the work, the hardscaping work, and then the soft landscaping work comes afterwards.
Okay, so...
Because hardscaping usually causes some damage to the lawn and things like that, and then you need it to be repaired, so.
Right, but is this plan that they're going to do, I mean, it includes, so it's landscape and courtyard design? Like, they're going to be doing landscape design also?
They are, but I think that your question you're asking, Anne, is should we have them look at the lawns on the side of the building and at the lobby entrance? Or is their focus only on the Historic Entrance and that lawn?
Right.
And we can, we can ask that question.
Okay, let's find out. And then, because if it's, you know, if we're going to be having them do a design, like, if it's just a little bit more, like, maybe we want to get a design, however...
I think, I think you'd get a better deal if you did it all at once, you know, because if you
Well, we've been talking about doing it for a long time.
What are the steps, what are the steps for addressing parking? Because if they're 15 years out, let's do the landscaping.
And I think that parking is realistically, could be pretty far out. I think we could be in several years, if we come up with a solution at all.
Right, and in the, we can kind of keep it in the back of our minds, maybe, that we don't do, we do most of the stuff closer to the building on the, on the Patriots Park, the lower entrance side. So that if, because if anything, if we were going to increase the parking, one of the options would have been like face-in parking and take some...
Right, on the Davis Street side.
Right.
We wouldn't want to delay what we need to do in the front of the building just while we're trying to figure out what we could do in the back.
Okay, so Kathleen, I guess if you could talk and find out if we could, you know, how much more it would be to kind of add in the extra space? And so then, should we wait and, but should we vote on doing the conceptual design to begin with, like, for the, what they had talked about, the $10,000 for the front part?
Could somebody sketch for me what, what the proposal is there? I think I missed this. Yeah, for the courtyard or whatever this...
The North Lawn Landscape in an open space.
Let me see if I can pull up. I have to find it first.
Basically, it's the front lawn off of the steps.
Right.
Historic entrance stairs.
The, what, what do they call Waterfields? They were suggested, like, they do that kind of work, too, like landscape design, and that it would really improve.
Yeah, extend into the, where the knee walls are, Bill? And I think I might have this.
It was, it was emailed out for our last meeting, but we can email it to you again.
Okay, so I have it. A question just is, if I can share, I think.
And if Bill is on the phone, I'm not sure he's going to be able to see it.
Oh, that's true.
I can't see it, yeah, right.
Oh, yeah. Okay, so what, Bill, I'm going to do is I'm just going to email this right to you, okay?
Okay, there we go.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, that, just as a point of interest, no, probably not relevant. Originally, there was a way to drive from Green Street over to Main Street, right in front of the, of the steps. Did you know that?
Yes.
People would drive up and, with a handicap access, before handicap access was known.
When we were kids, they, yeah.
Yeah, it was the circular driveway, you could park on it, too.
Yeah, yeah, they were curving, as I remember it, as well as, you know, drive up, yeah. Whatever, okay.
Yep. So, yeah, they're just, they said, they, they suggested that it would be, it's such a visual sightline, the front stairs, that it would make sense and it would be cheaper to do it all at once. You know, make it an actual, like, outside room where we could have some programs and do things outside and improve the, so do some hardscape areas, landscaping, planting areas, and maybe some lighting and... It's a lot cheaper. It's a lot cheaper to do it all at once, right? And we're, so we're hoping like maybe we could get it all done a year from now.
Yeah. Now, Bill, as a point of clarification, I'm sending you the drawing of the steps, not of what they're, what we started talking about with the north entrance. Open space, because we don't have that drawing yet. But, but I'm sending you what we have for the steps.
Okay.
Okay?
So they, they sent us a project description and the scope of work, and the first task is to. Conceptual design, which would be $10,000. So that may be something. Is this something we want to move forward with quickly? Because we want, well, basically, we need to have it ready by. February 1st.
We would probably want it sooner than that to speak to the town manager about adding it as a, a denim to the existing contract on the historic entrance work. But we, I think, I don't think we need to vote on it today. If we're going to go back and ask them about. Considering the other three lawn areas to the building, then that would be changing the scope of what we just voted on. So I think better to wait and vote after we have an answer to that question.
That's true, but if we don't meet until August, then is that gonna be too much of a delay?
I don't think so. If, if the application is really February.
Right, unless we want October.
But I thought we were gonna try the, for the CIP, we were gonna put the bathrooms in for CIP and the.
That's true.
For CPA in February. So bathrooms just need to be done. Those questions answered.
Okay, so then let's wait and vote. We'll, we'll get the answer for the rest of the, the total landscape design, how much more that would be, then we'll plan to vote on that in August.
Yeah.
And with the idea that we're gonna go to CPA in February. Okay. Okay. New business. We have the retirements, which you already talked about a little bit, Kathleen, with Jill Barker.
Yeah.
So this, this is where I asked for money.
Yes.
Well, I will send it to you in writing, so you won't have to struggle too much with the notes. Because both Sarah's leaving and Jill's leaving were very quick and unexpected. We did not plan big celebrations for them. We just did a little something with the staff. And so we basically bought, you know, juice and cookies. So I have some receipts to reimburse the staff members who bought the juice and the bagels for the. Too little going away parties that we had for the staff members that left. The other question that I have, because Jill Barker is retiring after 25 years, did we want to give her? You know, a more substantial kind of present. And if you remember the memories book we made for Sally Fowler a year ago. Because they were here nearly the identical 25 years, I will be honest and say, many of those same photographs in that book could be used again. We just need to find some extra pictures of Jill and make Jill a book. So my question is, if the trustees would like to fund that, and I'm estimating it would be. Under $120. If, sometimes they have coupons and I can do better, but I didn't want to start the, the process of. Making a book without first getting funding. So my first request is to approve to spend up to $120 to design the memory book for Jill.
Well, can we just bundle them into one motion where we also cover the receipt of covering the?
Yep, I would be happy to do that. So. Let's see here, I've got my notes. For the going away costs, one of them was 47 and 21.
Oh, 21 and 26.
So what I'm going to say.
50 for that.
So what we did for Jill Barker and for Sarah, and because Joanna Ulet, Colatane, Colatane, is that her new, how you pronounce her new name? Because she's really been a key partner, I did go and buy a small desk orchid for her. So if I add together all of those sort of recognition presents, it came to $69.04. So it would be the 120 for Jill and plus 69.04.
So I'll make a motion to fund up to $200 in recognition.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Yeah, that should cover it.
Yes.
All in favor? Anne Kavanaugh, yes? Mary?
Yes.
Eva?
Yes.
Oh, Bill?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
And Earl?
Yes.
Great. Okay, and tomorrow is Kathy Darby's retirement. Party. I'm gonna go to it, it's 10, and Kathleen will be there and maybe.
Kathleen, is the time again tomorrow?
It's from 10 to 11:30.
10 to 11:30.
I'll, I'll get a card from the trustees and a small plant or some sort of gift to bring.
What time, what time do you think you'll be there?
I'm gonna, well, Kathleen's going right at 10, is that correct?
Yeah, I'll probably be there a little bit early. I think I'm part of the decorating committee.
I'll plan to go around 10. Are you going, Eva, if you are?
I think. Oh. I have a 10 o'clock to 10:30 meeting. I'll try to go shortly, as soon as.
Why don't you text me, we can go at the same time.
Okay, all right.
May I just go back to the last motion Mark made? That was for $200 in recognition?
Correct.
Who seconded that? Okay, thank you.
You know what, do we want to make it like 2:25? Because I'm gonna get something for Kathy also. I mean, I don't mind just covering it, but. Because that would make it. If it's 120 plus like the 75, yeah, could we make it?
I think you just need to propose a friendly amendment, and if it's accepted by the person who made the amendment, who made the main motion, it can be put right into the motion.
Okay, the amendment would be up to $250 total.
I agree. So we can make that as a friendly amendment and do that. That's, by the way, that's a little Robert's Rule of Order that I had in another organization. No objections, if there are no objections, then it's written, it's written into this main motion.
Okay, good to know. Thank you.
That's very helpful.
Yeah, 2:25 or 2:50?
2:50 was the number.
Okay, my second request. Is to be reimbursed. Because we had very short notice about opening the building up completely, we basically had a day and a half to move. All of the furniture from the first and second floor back and around the original spaces. The staff worked very hard to do that. And so I spoke to Anne Kavanaugh at the time. We treated the staff to lunch. So the cost that, and we're gonna call it the moving day lunch, came to $178.38. So is that an acceptable expense for the trustees?
Yes, well, I think so. Is that something we have to vote on?
Do I have to make a motion to approve that expense and pay, reimburse?
I'll second that.
Okay, so moved.
Okay, so.
Who made the motion, Eva?
I made the motion.
And we're seconded, and we'll do the roll call. Anne Kavanaugh, yes?
Mary?
Mary Desha, yes.
Bill Duffy?
Yes.
Eva Homery, yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Earl Svensson?
Yes.
Okay.
And my next request is for, we purchased a piece of software earlier this year called When to Work. It's scheduling software. That we're trying to find a way to streamline the process of scheduling staff. And this is one of those things where you have to purchase it with a credit card, which means we couldn't do it as a town purchase. The trustees paid for the first version of this. It's time to renew it. And so the request is for the trustees to make the renewal. For the When to Work software, it's $120.
This is reimbursed by the town?
No, this, this is just us.
But this is work software?
It's an experiment we're working with.
I'm missing, I'm so missing the genesis of this. So this sounds like it should be funded by the town.
Well, it sounds like they're trying it out. So, I mean, is this something?
Well, we've had it for a year, right? And now it's time to renew it. So isn't that something we can approach the town with?
It will be more difficult. There are some things that it's much easier. One of the discussions that we've had. Is, you know, when are there additional either equipment or software that makes work easier for the staff? And so when we first looked at this software, we were thinking of it as something that was supporting the staff and why we brought it to the trustees.
Well, it's not staff development though, right? It doesn't fall under the staff development of our spending remit. This is, this sounds, this feels like it should be, I mean, I know this is really minor, but it really should be funded by the town. This is scheduling software that schedules people to work. It's clearly a business software. It should be, it should be scheduled by, it should be funded by the town. I'm not sure why. Just because it's easier doesn't mean that that's the right thing to do.
But at the same time, maybe they can put it in as a line item. Into budget later on. And we can just pick it up now. If, there's a viable argument that it is staff related and that it assists staff, so.
Well, it's staff related, but it's not staff development related.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with Mark. I mean, it's a long way from staff development.
Is there some place to fit it in, Kathleen, to your budget, in your budget for like? I don't know what it would fall under, but.
It falls under office supplies, to be honest with you. Software like that, I mean, this is just minor expense. I get it, but. In principle, it doesn't seem like this fits within our remit.
Or it could be miscellaneous for us.
Who actually uses the software?
Cindy is using it, but if we're able to get it functioning, then all of the staff will be able to use it to do things. Like check when they're scheduled to work, maybe help manage people's vacation requests and things like that. So it becomes a tool that is used by the staff.
It's a management function. What are we talking about?
Yeah, I agree.
Well, is there someplace you could slot it in under like? Like tools that you use? Or we could make it miscellaneous for the, for the endowment, like for one more year. I don't know. I would hate for them to not have this tool if it's gonna be that handy.
I don't, I, I think we can, I think the town, town can find a way to fund that.
Okay.
Even if you, why not, why not just expense it then? If you need a credit card, do it on your own credit card and then expense it as through the town.
That's what we've, that's what we've already done, Mark. I'm trying to get a reimbursement for the staff member.
Well, why would, why wouldn't the town reimburse that then?
It's not always that easy with the town for some of these things. But I will find a way to take care of it.
Well. Kathleen, if you can't, are you gonna try to get the town to reimburse? And can you come back to us if the town won't? Because. Can you try it that way? Or have you already tried and you were unsuccessful?
We have not tried. And part of it is because it's happening at the end of the fiscal year, where at the moment, we're basically. Really not supposed to be putting any more purchase order requests in. In order to get a reimbursement, it has to go in as with a purchase order first. Since it's, everything closes at midnight tomorrow night. The renewal kind of came up on us faster than I was expecting.
I don't know, I think we should fund it just once more, and then we figure it out. If you really like it and want to do it again, we, I, maybe we put it under miscellaneous. Just because it's not gonna be worth all their time and effort to figure this out.
Yeah.
And.
Did I miss the amount? I didn't, I didn't.
120.
120.
Oh, I think we should just pay for it, rather than make you jump through hoops, Kathleen, to try to figure out. You know, not that I, I, I hear what Mark's saying and what everybody agrees.
I do too.
Agrees, but, but I don't think it's fair to make you.
Like, I think like next year, if you decide, yeah, this is something great I really want it, then it should go into like one of the line item budgets.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We could certainly plan for it that way.
Yeah, I'm, I'm usually picky on this too, but I, I agree. I, I think an argument can be made, it's beneficial for the staff. And, you know, given the hassle that. The employee would have to go through.
And the spending freeze that just went on.
Yeah. Pay for it and.
Yeah.
Kathleen, hopefully by next year, we'll figure out a better way.
Right, with the caveat that next year it will be pursued in a different fashion.
Right, if it's gonna be an ongoing tool being used for like administration and stuff, then, okay, so we need a motion for this, somebody.
I'll make a motion that we cover that $125 reimbursement for that software. Cindy, fill in the blank software.
I think it's 120.
120, okay.
Whatever.
Appropriate amount is to reimburse the, the staff member for this cost, for this year.
Oh.
Second?
I'll second that.
Okay, I vote yes. Anne Kavanaugh, Mary?
Yes.
Phil?
I vote yes, but I have to leave the meeting.
Okay.
See you next meeting. Bye bye.
Thanks, Bill.
Fourth of July.
Me, I vote yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Mark?
No.
Earl?
Yes.
Okay.
And I finally clued into the fact that you were doing the roll call in alphabetical order.
Oh, okay. I know.
Sorry.
Except I did it out of order once. Sometimes I just look at the screen and kind of.
Yeah, that's right.
All right, are we, okay, now summer with the Stevens budget. Is that what we're on now, Kathleen?
Yes. So what I'd like to be authorized is to spend some money to cover expenses for the summer with the Stevens. Either for refreshments or to pay for a program, an activity, something like that. Earlier this year, we had planned to spend $3,000 to have programs on Sunday afternoons in April, May and June. We did not have maybe any of those programs, so we never spent that 3,000. So I feel comfortable coming back and asking that we consider setting aside up to 100, $1,000 for this summer.
Okay.
What was the 3,000 for, I mean, why the, why one third of what last summer was?
We were looking to have programs on Sunday afternoons, virtual programs for the adults, and we looked at doing some in April, May and June. So we were looking at about eight or nine Sundays.
Yeah, it was the spring, not last summer.
Yeah, yeah, sorry, that's right. It was the spring. April, May and early June really was the spring, wasn't it? So I feel like the, first off, the Friends have been successful in their book sales, and they have funded. Most of the expenses that I have already planned for the summer, but it would be nice to have a little bit more money. And so I thought $1,000 would be enough to cover the other things that I was looking at.
What about, I assume the, the movies under the tent are not happening?
They are not happening this year.
Okay. Because I think, was, did we use to pay for that or did the Friends?
Yes, you paid for at least part of that, sometimes.
That was another thing we approved that we didn't spend last summer, so, okay, can I have a motion for that?
I move, we spend $1,000 on this summer's summer program.
Second.
All right, roll call. Anne Kavanaugh, yes? And Bill's gone. Eva?
Yes.
Mark Rogers?
Yes.
Earl Svensson?
Yes.
Okay. All right, I think that takes care of all the financial items.
There is one more, and actually, this is more of a question. We have planned to support staff development. Do you need me to bring each of those staff member requests back individually? They happen though through. They happen though throughout the year and many of them need to be done at a certain time, within a certain timeframe, but we may not be meeting.
And that would not be a good idea then. If we, if, so what, what, what would be the proposal? To, to allocate a particular amount in the future or?
And that's what we had done in, in previous years. That if we looked at that budget document, we didn't in, in January each year, we, we put in a lump sum that would be used for staff development. And then as the request came in, I spent against that estimated amount. And I'll be honest, I don't remember what we estimated for FY '21, but I know we didn't spend most of it, so.
Is this for, wait, this is for staff betterment?
Examples are, so for instance, my membership to belong to the American Library Association has just come up for renewal. So that's what actually brought the question up, that my membership came up. Some of the other staff members, because we joined at different times, our memberships for our professional associations in particular, just come up throughout the year on the anniversary whenever we joined.
So can, is this, are you asking for like a set amount for fiscal year 2022 for the staff?
We can talk about that in the next meeting, I guess. My question is, what's the process for doing this?
I think you, we would want a proposal for the kinds of things that you'd like to do with some general costs associated with those.
Okay.
We clearly have funding for staff betterment.
So we had a, at the 1/26/21 meeting, we gave the libraries $2,600 in the fund for staff training. So is that, I mean, is that when we usually do it? In January?
Yeah, in, in January each year, when we submit the budget to the town, one of the things that we submit in the budget is a statement about how we plan to spend money we get from other sources. So while we put in the municipal budget request, we also put in a statement, we're expecting to get X amount of money from the friends. Here's how we'll spend it. We're expecting to get X amount of money from the trustees. Here's how we would spend it. And so in that document each year is we would put in a, a number that I would spend against for specifically things like professional memberships or staff members attending a conference or something like that.
Right, and we had in 10,000 in there for last year. If, if this is for 21.
Yeah, this year to date has been roughly 6,500 for both conference registration fees, staff appreciation and association membership.
So, I mean, we basically, we've kind of tabled like our 2022 endowment budget. But I think maybe we need to have that in the, or do you need to know ahead of the August meeting Kathleen?
So I have the one bill right now, which is for my own membership renewal. If we have the funds then from '21, then we'll put it in to be paid with this year. And then in our meeting in August, we will talk about the FY '22 budget and talk about what happens for the following, the coming year.
Yes, okay.
We should.
Because we kept, we kept pushing that off every meeting, like table, 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 so.
Do we need a special motion to just cover that one bill in this fiscal year?
I mean, I don't know, because we had already appropriated that money.
Yeah, so just pay it.
Yeah, it's okay. I just wanted to, part of this again is we're working on some new processes and it was, it came up. It was a good example to ask the question. So I will submit that bill to Earl as well then, and I think that's.
I, I wanna point out too, you know, we, we have an obligation to spend the money that our donors have donated. And the Charms Fund is a significant piece, which, you know, funds the staff development, conferences, et cetera. So, you know, this is certainly something we, we should be looking fondly on, I guess, to the way to say it.
Right.
Absolutely.
Okay, yeah, so definitely spend that. Can you pay it by tomorrow?
Well, we, we can date the check any way we want.
Okay.
Well, are you, are you gonna pay and we reimburse you or no? You, you send these checks right to the ALA, right?
Yeah, as many as possible. We try to pay directly and not have the staff pay and then have to be reimbursed. Partly that reduces the paperwork for Earl as well, that he only has to deal with one expense and not reimbursing people too.
Okay, that's.
This, this expense also keeps Bill happy.
Yes.
Yeah.
Even though he's not on the meeting anymore. Okay, so.
That, that was it. Thank you very much.
Okay. So all we have left is our long range planning meeting. But Mary, I'll contact you and Stan separately, and Kathleen and Cindy. And we're thinking about doing the next meeting, August 17th, Tuesday, August 17th. So mid-August and it'll be in person.
Nice.
So. And that should be it, so. Is everyone good with that date?
Yep. At what time? Five?
Yes. Okay, so we can adjourn unless there's anything else anybody has.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
All right.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, Anne Kavanaugh votes yes.
Mary Deschardes votes yes.
Eva Homery votes yes.
Mark Rogers votes yes.
Earl Svensson votes yes.
Okay, then we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Happy fourth there, guys.
Yeah, happy fourth. Okay.